Welcome, this is the August 10, 2022, meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. This meeting is being conducted by a Zoom webinar. Participants and attendees, please be advised that your name, image, and telephone number may be recorded. Attendees are welcome to ask questions or make comments using the quote, raise your hands feature of the software. After being recognized by the chair, attendees will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Let me introduce the members of the board. Jenny Batlet, just raise your Pat Jackson, Ginny Zekatinsky, Susanna Roberts, Keith Soze, and my name is Lynn Ryan. Okay, I declare the continuation of the hearing for our Berlin Memorial School sign open at, what did you say it was?
It's now 7:03.
At 7:03 PM. Let me introduce Mr. Campbell. I think we all know him. First, the board wishes to express our condolences on the loss in your family that prevented you from attending our last meeting. During the interim, we understand that you have met with at least one other board. So, Mr. Campbell, I think I'll turn this over to you, and you can explain to us the current status of the sign, if it differs from what you originally presented to us, et cetera.
Thanks so much for your kind thoughts. It was my dad's older sister who passed, and not suddenly, but you know, these things never come at the right time. But I apologize for the confusion last month. I really appreciate the board's patience letting me come back and do this today. You're right, I did meet with the select board, as you know, and I guess there's a letter, I did not get the letter. So I'm not aware of what that is. And they were comfortable with with using town property to place the sign. There was, as I'm sure you're all aware, differences of opinion as to the type of sign, the quality of the sign. And that's been discussed before. I also met with the planning board, who similarly had several questions and differing opinions about the sign and the appearance of the sign, all of which we kind of took into consideration. I appeared to kind of ask for your consideration to grant us the exception to the zoning rules and kind of clarify where we're at with it and kind of possibly suggest some limitations on that exception that might make people more comfortable. The sign itself, because a part of the discussion in both groups previously was around, you know, well, I talked to so and so, and they really like it, or I talked to so and so, and they weren't so happy. When the sign came up for vote at town meeting to fund it, it's a capital, it's capital in them. It was essentially unanimously passed. So there's, I think, a lot of comfort generically, even though I think people who've lived in town, especially people who've lived in town a long time, have concerns, and I think that we need to take those concerns into consideration. I have a few images that I wanted to share, just to recap kind of what we're talking about here. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
I don't know if I have to make you a co-host in order to do that.
Oh, no.
Do you see an option for you?
I already, I see me there. So let me, let me do this, let me turn it on first.
Yeah, let's see if it lets you, and if not, I could make you a co-host, I guess.
Of course, I just want to start the slideshow first, so I know which screen I'm this is always the hard part. If you can bear with me for one minute.
Lynn, while he's doing that, do we need to read into the meeting minutes, or read into the meeting, the letter from the select board?
Yeah, if you're available to do that, Suzanne, why don't you read it while Mr. Campbell is attempting to share his screen?
Okay. It's a lengthy letter, so I think what I'm going to do is skip down to the board's recommendation. And note that, I mean, we can put, attach the entire letter to the meeting minutes, I suppose. But starting on paragraph three, it says, "The board further discussed sign placement requests and noted its appreciation of Principal Campbell's interest in working with the town on a practical solution. The board expressed its desire that the requests go through the proper channels for approval and requested that the school sign be in accordance with the town's existing zoning bylaws, parentheses setbacks, lighting, and size to the greatest extent possible. Understanding that zoning issues need to be discussed with the planning board and VBA, the board unanimously approved the following: The Berlin Memorial School requests to replace and relocate the school sign previously located on the left-hand side of the driveway entrance to 34 South Street and to place the replacement sign on either the left or right-hand side of the driveway entrance, subject to planning and zoning board approvals and in compliance with the Berlin zoning bylaw." That seems to be the pertinent part for us.
Mr. Campbell, was that your take when you met with the select board?
Yep. No, that was basically where we left it.
Did they have concern over the LED?
They had concerns with lighting in general. The LED in particular is interesting. Some people were more comfortable with a static sign that was illuminated. And I wasn't sure.
What do you, what do you feel the, my take on the letter says, you know, conforming as closely as possible to the zoning bylaw. Well, the zoning bylaw doesn't allow LED lighting of a sign. So I'm just wondering what your take was at the meeting, because we weren't there.
Well, I think that part of the discussion was around your ability to grant an exemption to some of those bylaws. Based on the school being a municipal building, right? We kind of reviewed some of that before. Some of the concerns, and one of the initial concerns, and it was an image that they saw, they were concerned about setbacks. That was not an issue, that was just bad imagery. But as you know, there is reluctance to, it was two parts to it, there was, for some people, just a reluctance to change the, or not change, but exempt from the bylaws, the LED lighting piece. For others, it was, the other piece of feedback I got consistently was, gee, if we do it for the school, we'll have to do it for other people. Yeah, and that was the other concern that I heard in both groups. But they didn't want to get into this downward spiral of everybody wanting an electrified sign. And, you know, so my feeling in talking with my colleagues at the school was, we can ask for what we would like and leave it up to the zoning board. And we, as I've said from the get-go, what this group decides is what we will live with. But if you don't ask, you don't know.
Leanne, do we have any member from the select board?
Yes, Chris Keith is in attendance, would you like me to promote her?
Well, let's ask Chris if she wants to be promoted.
I don't see a hand going up.
Oh, it's up.
It's up, I'll move her up.
Thank you. Do we also have anyone from the planning board?
No, we have Louise Janda from Conservation. Is she there?
I don't see her as yet.
She's there, here she comes.
Here I am.
I, I hate to put you on the spot, Chris, but as we can't attend your meetings, could you help us interpret the letter that you folks wrote? I'm taking it that you'd like us to keep as close as possible to the zoning bylaw, is that correct?
Yes, I would say that's correct. We, we had hoped that the school could keep as closely to the bylaw as possible.
And what about the LED? Was there any?
I think we suggested one option might be solar.
But there was more to power it. Right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell, I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, that the solar part was more to provide power to the sign?
Yes, that's, that's true. I think we were concerned about, you know, having the school pay electricity costs, which then in turn goes to the taxpayer.
And the people that are, that we've contacted around the sign design are looking into that, there's not something that they're aware of right now that would make a meaningful difference. But he's investigating that for us.
Okay.
How late at night will this sign be lit up?
Well, that's one of the things I wanted to propose, is kind of a middle ground. I think if the zoning board approves this kind of exemption, you know, from the standard bylaw, then I think some of the, part of that agreement could be, and I don't know, can you see the picture that I put up?
Yes.
Let me just get through to the end of that, because I have a few. So that's the sign that we're looking for. This is the sign in Northborough. This is the sign we don't want. What I was going to suggest was that
What's this sign in Northborough? I don't see the sign in Northborough.
Let me go back and see if I can do it again here, hold on. Oh, now you're just challenging me now. So this is the school sign, it's a lot like the sign at Toronto. This is a Northborough sign with just letters on a neutral background. I was there the other night getting gas on my way home. The same sign with big, not neutral background. I thought it was a great example of something I don't think any of us want to see in the center of town or my part of the center. So what my suggestion would be is if we could consider on a one-time basis for the elementary school, an exemption to the rules around LED lighting, that the board could consider the following conditions, that we only use alphanumeric text, a neutral background, that there are no flashing messages, and that the only images involved that would be used would be the seals of the school district, the town, or our little Berlin blue jay to eliminate all that flutter. And then a further suggestion, as I'm kind of talking through this, I think you would want to empower perhaps the select board to make changes to that as they stop it and empower public safety to use the sign for whatever they thought would be necessary, especially in the case of an emergency. And I thought this might be a middle ground where we could kind of get the best of both worlds. The, my thought with the sign on and off would be seven in the morning to seven in the evening. And I say seven in the evening only because there's so many night activities at school that people would see it, you know, that soccer players would see it, the soccer families would see it coming in, the basketball families would see it coming in. But at seven o'clock, it would go off, and that can be done automatically. And then again, the only exception would be public safety. Folks in the public safety side decide they need to sign lift for something, you know, we could grant them an exception. So I thought, so this was the proposal that I wanted to make to see if we can find a middle ground for this. I don't know, do you have any questions?
Let's just talk about some of the basics.
Sure.
How high off the ground is the top of the sign?
I think
I think it was 79 inches.
Yep. In fact, it's the same measurement as the one at Toronto, so let me put that one up. 79 inches. And then 84 inches across.
And it is illuminated on both sides, is it?
Correct. So that it could be seen from either approach on South Street. One of the problems with the Toronto sign for anybody who's driven past, by the time you get to it, you're gone, and you really, it's not a super effective messaging system. And you're talking to somebody who had to drive his kid there every day, so. And the expense to do both sides was, I was very surprised, minimal.
How big is the sign itself?
It is 24 by 48.
Does anyone on the board wish to ask a question or make a comment or?
Actually, I do have a question, Lynn, just so I can understand. I went through it and read the bylaws, and there did seem like there was an exception under 917-1 that allows for government function. And isn't a school a government function?
Yes. And we discussed this last time. It's because the land on which the sign will be placed does not belong to the school. It belongs to the town, the Board of Selectmen. Their land is limited and is further back. So this is why the selectmen have a strong input and the planning board have a strong input, because it's not on their land.
But, but they can, they can improve it then, right? So it is, they, they do have control of that.
Well, it would be the selectmen, in my feeling, that would be the ones that would say, yes, that's fine, or no, that's not fine.
Right, I thought that's what we had talked about last time, then he was going to go off and talk to them and see if it was fine or not. And then we're sort of in an echo loop where they're saying, it's fine with them as long as it's fine with us, is that right, Chris?
I think it was just as, it's fine with us to put the sign on the town property. And then we suggested that the school stick with as closely as possible to the zoning bylaws.
In terms of illumination?
Well, in terms of all of the, all the bylaws, as, I mean, all parts of the bylaws, you know, size and illumination and whatever else is in that bylaw.
In his good drawing, you got 84 inches width. And you're telling me you only put a 48-inch sign in there?
Yeah, well, let me look for that while you guys are talking, because I had the original drawing.
Because you got like a six-inch granite pole, so that's a foot. So that's five feet. And you're looking for two feet more.
Let me see what I can do here. Four by six, I'm sorry. It's not two by four, it's four by six.
Now, your understanding, Mr. Campbell, is that the planning board had no problem with using the LED, is this correct?
No, they were, it was actually, there were three people that spoke. One was in favor of it, one was opposed to it, and one was kind of on the path. I know, super awful.
There were only three members present?
Yep.
And what concerns did they raise? That someone else would want the same thing?
That was the primary one for them, that we make an exception for the school, we might have to make exceptions for other organizations.
But that was only one person that shared that view, is that correct?
Right, it was discussed. It's not at some length, and it was a significant part of the discussion. They don't want it to get out of hand. My sense was, you know, this might be a nice idea, but we don't want like every place in town to have an LED sign.
I mean, did they talk about potential, who would, who else would be interested? I mean, there's only so many.
They worried about the churches, they worried about the library. There was one other place that they were concerned about. It was more a generic worry, you know, again, it's, we're doing something different, people are going to have questions and concerns.
John, did they also talk about talking about the, a change in the bylaw, looking at it and possibly changing it at a town meeting?
It went, yeah. One of the members in particular felt like bylaws and questions were somewhat dated, they might need to be looked at in terms of, you know, what's currently available. Doesn't help me, but yeah, thank you for reminding me, Chris, you're absolutely right.
So you're looking for a variance for the size size of the sign, correct? You're looking for a variance for the height? Is it within the height requirements?
I believe we are also, and I can pull up Steve's original request.
I have it here too.
We are between facilities managers, I'm not sure that you are all aware that Mr. Pushterri has moved on.
That's a party I'd like to go to.
Oh wait, it was inappropriate for me to laugh.
And me too.
You're going to really like, as you have contacted the guy that we hired, is kind of the anti-Steve. Very inclusive, very soft-spoken, very knowledgeable. Let's see, so I've got Steve's petition here.
Yeah, I've got the letter from the building commissioner. And we kind of go by what he has to say, because he's the final word. And one was because it shouldn't be larger than 12 square feet. Yeah, and the LED sign shall be illuminated only with steady stationary shielded external lighting sources. Freestanding signs, the school is located within the residential agricultural zoning district. Under the table of dimensional standards for freestanding signs, the maximum height is eight feet. And the maximum square footage per side is 10 square feet. Allows for a bulletin board, a similar sign not exceeding 12 square feet in display area in connection with a church, museum, library, school, or similar public or semi-public structure. So I'm taking from what he has to say is that the size of the sign, the height of the sign, and the illumination.
Is that also hours of illumination, Lynn?
Well, we can set hours of illumination.
Yeah, isn't it supposed to be nine to six?
Yes.
So he needed part one on that too.
Yeah. Saying that the sign could only be illuminated during the operating hours of the school would not meet your needs, would it, Mr. Campbell?
I think you'd have to, it would meet my personal needs, though, in terms of the school, it would, it would meet the needs of parents coming and going, pick up and drop off, that kind of thing. I don't think it, the goal for me with the sign is to have people know what's going on in the building. And for the parents who don't pick up their kids, who are only there for soccer or basketball or after-school activities, you know, they won't see that.
In a world of social media where every kid has one or two phones, and mom and dad has one or two phones, and they're all on connect to school, connect to town, connect to everything, aren't they getting information probably before you even get it?
You, you know, it's funny, you bring that up, because it's a topic of conversation in school. I actively resist using social media. It has become such a toxic place that I hate for our school to be like candy that draws people in.
Did you get any feedback from residents around there with flat, you know, just what they think of it?
We haven't heard anything from any residents either, unless they're present. Let me just put this out there. I know we have 10 folks, so I'm assuming that we don't have any residents attending.
No, the only one in attendance is Louise Janda from Conservation.
The only thing that I heard was incidental in passing. One of the neighbors across the street said that they had no problems with the school and whatever they wanted was fine.
I get a lot of that. The town is, the town is, it's super support, I'm always so.
I will say, though, that I do, I'm on the Facebook group for Berlin, and I do see a lot of people asking questions about whether it's a snow day, whether it's delayed, if there's a late, if one of the buses is late. So the questions are being asked on Facebook, so it, people there are looking for answers. They're not going to be looking on the street for those kinds of answers.
Oh, no, no, the sign won't help with that.
And I haven't, I mean, hadn't actively questioned a bunch of people, but this has come up in conversation with just my neighbors and people I know in town, and I have yet to talk with anybody who is opposed to this. Are we aware of anybody who's opposed to this?
Only heard one person that was resistant, I wouldn't even say against it, just resistant.
I think the number one, folks, that may or may not have something to say is the planning board or and the select board. You have no problem if we were to approve the sign in any form for it to be used by other town departments under the jurisdiction of the, of the select board, is that correct?
That is correct. I think that's an important part of this, that was one of our goals, was to have it be more of a center for communication. You know, we try to publicize, for example, the stuff that happens at the library, we have a great little library. So they could use it to publicize like their after-school programs and their summer reading programs. There's a lot of good things happening in town, and the town we would all be a part of, you know, utilizing that sign.
Hence the concern of the selectmen that they may want their own LED sign. Anyone have anything else?
I'm a little confused on something. Are we talking about the sign only being on during school hours? Because it sounds like using it by other town entities means it would be on outside of school hours, so I'm just not sure where we stand on that.
My take on this was that the school would use it. that the school would use it only between the hours of seven to seven or during normal school hours, whichever we set. But that it would be open to use by the town at any time approved by the Board of Selectmen. In other words, you know, the night we're having town meeting there. If there is some kind of an emergency in town and they wanted to post it there, they could. I'm not sure how they would go about that. Where would this sign, were it to be the LED sign, where could it be programmed from?
One of the nice things, it can be programmed from anywhere. It's all web based, so we could reach out with pass codes, basically, a way to log in. You wouldn't give it to everybody, but you'd give it to the emergency services folks, you'd give it to somebody in the town offices. So that they could access. We would be happy if this, on my side, to kind of facilitate, you know, you don't want you have to teach everybody how to post their message. So, and I've seen this in other school districts, they have a form right on their website. You want a message put up on the board, you fill out the form and then somebody in the school takes it. But in an emergency, it's something that had to happen fast. If there's an accident, you know, they're closing a road, please avoid Route 495. You know, we could, you can set it up so that people can access that sign remotely.
I have a comment regarding notifying weather conditions, road closures, et cetera. And I don't feel the school is one of the most traveled roads in town. If this were going to be a notification for the townspeople, a location to me that would reach more people would be, say something along Route 62.
It wouldn't be the only place you keep, you know, we're, and we're not saying that it would be the only place, it would be another alternative. You know, we get a lot of traffic, we get a lot of school traffic and we have a lot of parents go through. You're right, it's not the most traveled, South Street is not the most traveled street in town, but it sees a lot of traffic.
Yes, it does. I also have a little concern of its location. I use South Street generally to go to the transfer station. And there is a residence right at the entrance to the driveway. And your sign or the location, be it right or left side is right there. And my concern is, when I've driven by it, I have thought to myself, well, if there's a sign there, am I going to actually be able to read it? I'm generally, I don't know, I think if you've noticed, there are always cars and pickup trucks parked along the side of the road there and I do not want to take my eyes off the road. So that's a couple of my concerns.
Yeah, I think that's why you want to keep the signs static. You don't want flashing explosions and waving flags and all that stuff. That's why I thought if we stuck to just wording, a couple of pictures that everybody could agree to. We could avoid some of that. It's, in, in, in a lot of ways, it, it's just a more flexible version of the sign we've had there for 15 years. It's oriented the same way, so you don't have to look over like you do at Toronto, you know, you're going to, it's going to be in your field division, no matter which way you come on South Street. But yeah, safety first when we're driving, right?
Right.
Do we know what the brightness of the sign is going to be? We do have lighting requirements in the bylaws. Are we, is it going to be able to comply with that?
It was not my, having read a letter from the building commissioner, that was not his concern either. It is however, why we don't want it to be, you know, a big traumatic thing. But it is, you know, we're not talking Vegas lights.
Would the LED sign carry several messages at the same time?
I, you know, I would look for best practice. I would think not Lynn. I think you want one thing at a time and then just kind of have them rotate through. So the first thing might be a reminder that parent teacher conferences are on Tuesday, October 5th. And then next thing might be, you know, reading with Ms. Lynn is at the library every Tuesday at 9:00 AM. So that people kind of have a sense because they'll see it several times, the sign. With the old time, we would put four things up, that was all we had room for, you know, four little dates. Important dates for the month, the reminder that Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving is a half day. Which we have to say for weeks because people still forget that the half day is a half day and there's no lunch, yada yada. But I think if we kept the sign kind of simple then people might be more likely to retain that single message at a time and repeated exposures would give them different messages.
Okay, folks, what other information do you feel we need or do you feel we need any other information to come to a decision on this?
I, I think the other thing that I was worried about, and again, it goes back to the lighting, is if there's some kind of, not roof, baffle maybe, over the top so that the light pollution is
deflected?
Yeah, so it's not, you know, lighting up the air. I know it's not going to be like the U-Haul place that you see from the highway, but there might be a concern if it is lit in the wintertime at night. It might seem brighter than you would expect. So that's, I mean, my only concerns are with how bright it's going to be because I think that's what's going to annoy neighbors the most.
Did we determine the net, the maximum looms?
That's something I'm aware of.
Well, what intensity is the light?
Regular intensity?
I don't think.
Technical answers, I don't have the technical answers. I don't want to make anything off.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my mind, there really there are very different types of LED signs out there and I think that is a big component of this, right? I, since this has come up on the board, I've been noticing these school signs everywhere and it seems to be kind of a standard thing now in most schools and towns. I never really noticed them before, my kids have long since grown, but driving around, I certainly see them and I do notice that they're not, they seem like they're their own breed of LED sign. They're not sort of the neon, you know, get your attention type of thing. They seem very low profile to me. And I don't know technically what the difference is between that and the U-Haul LED sign or the, you know, McDonald's LED signs or the crazy ones we see. But to me, that, that is a big factor here is the sign that you're proposing to me isn't really a standard LED sign in my mind. You know, it's a, it's a different technology or at least it has a different appearance.
So what does that mean, Kate, that you're curious as to what the looms would be as opposed to?
Well, I mean, from my standpoint, I guess maybe this is more of a bylaw down the road thing and maybe that's where the planning board was going with it needs to be revised. You know, I, I think he's done a good job of presenting the exact sign that he wants. We all can go to Toronto and see what that is and we all recognize that that's a very low profile LED type. Maybe that's something that needs to be addressed in the bylaw down the road as far as exceptions or what's allowed, you know, based on what the, the town wants to vote for.
But how would we quantify this? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, I'm researching now. It does seem like there are different terms for them. I mean, I, I personally feel like he's given us enough information based on the exception of that clause, that we have the authority to basically kick it back to the select board and say, if they say yes, it's okay. I feel like being a government facility, it's, we have the authority to approve this. And he's, he's demonstrated the exact example of what he wants, which is pretty standard for all school systems these days. So I don't feel like we're, you know, really breaking the mold here personally. That's, that's my take on it. But some of these, it does raise questions, you know, I, I definitely appreciate what Ginny is saying as far as safety concerns, you know, distracting drivers. And I assume that there's, you know, every school system has that same issue and, you know, there, I'd like to think that someone's done some studies on that. We're not, we're not inventing the wheel here. We're not the first to put the sign up. And then the other issue is, you know, some of these things that Mr. Campbell is listing are basically standard operating procedures. It's one thing for you to, it sounds like we're on the same page. You, you don't want to distract people and you don't want to put too much information out there. But who's to say that the next principal has a different approach and maybe wants to, you know, put a bunch of esprit de corps, you know, mascot imagery up there. Not sure where we have the control over that. So while I personally like everything that you're saying, and I think the sign is, you know, just another example of, you know, progression in town and it's a good thing. I think it fosters a positive image and it shows that we're supporting the school and I think it, you know, provides the community with information and it gives us a resource and a, and a specific point of connection that the whole community can come to. I'm for all of this and we haven't really heard too much opposition from anybody. But there are some loose ends on here that, you know, I don't know if we, if it's important for us to tie those up before we vote on this or not.
Pat, were you raising your hand?
Well, actually it was for a different reason, but basically in the same lines as Keith, I agree. I don't think anybody has objection to the sign, but since we are or they are a agency of the town that you want to do things correctly. And again, where you can almost comply with everything, I'm not sure why you know, you change the hours if you leave them within the actual bylaws. Again, the illumination, if you have a definitive idea of what that's going to be. The size, why things have to be just a little bit different because there's some, there may be someone who comes down the road and says, yeah, 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 we're a town and we're changing very rapidly. And I, I don't, I think we're bouncing it around. But I'm not sure if it's in our area to tell Mr. Campbell exactly that we can allow all these things to be changed, if that makes sense. If it's in our department, I'm not sure.
Anyone else?
I just, I mean, I agree with most of it. I feel that we need something we need something selected to be able to say yes or no, just as we were doing with another applicant where they came to us without a plan and they said, well, this is our intent. And we said, we, and we had told them, no, you have to bring a plan for us to look at and to approve. I, I feel the same as here, that we're not saying no, but we need, we need something concrete to approve. We need to, to know what the sign is, what the specs are for it. And then we can move forward. We can't just do something on a schematic.
Now, when you say specifications, I mean, we've got the height, we've got the size. Are you talking more the intensity of the lighting? Is that where you're coming from, Susanna?
Yeah, the lighting, the baffles, how, I mean, we can't really say whether or not it complies with our exterior lighting bylaw because we don't have anything, we don't have any specific numbers or dimensions to, to say yes or no, this complies. All we know is the idea of it complies.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Benny, Jimmy?
My thoughts are the same. The brightness of the sign, maybe they could look and see what is the brightest LED they have? What's the lowest one and some, something in the middle?
Is there actually part of the bylaw that talks about specific lumens for even non LED lights, you know?
Yeah, there's, it just, it just says lighting intensity shall not exceed point two foot candles at the lot line. And that says the luminaire shall have an angle cutoff of less than 76 degrees. So, I mean, those are two specifics that if there was a make and model that had been selected, we could say, yep, that works or no, that doesn't work. Do we want to give a variance at that point?
Which article are you reading? Where is it?
Page 92, section 1030, I'm sorry, 1031. And 1031.2 gives the lighting intensity level. And 1031.4 talks about the angle of cutoff. And I think there's something else on the following page. No, it, the, the following page is for the overlay district.
Ginny, do you have any thoughts?
Not anymore. No, no I don't.
Where are you coming down as far as the illumination goes? Does it matter to you?
Yes. It does to me, yeah.
Mr. Campbell, you said you're in no hurry, correct?
I am in no hurry.
Do you think it would be possible for you to, given what Susanna just read in the bylaw about, you know, the intensity of the lighting and so forth, and there was a comment made about whether or not some deflector at the top of the sign would need to be utilized? Would, do you think this is something you could investigate?
Yeah, I mean, it would be good enough just to kind of give me a list. You know, these are the questions we'd like answered. I can go back to the person who's been tasked with making the sign and get that information.
Okay, so we, we want to know the intensity. Let me see if I can of the lighting. Is it a question I heard among the group that some kind of deflection?
That was me and that might be 1031.4, the luminaire has an angle of cutoff less than 76 degrees.
So it's 1031 dot what?
Four.
Okay. And what was the intensity of the lighting in the previous one? What reference did you make there?
1031.2 and the lighting intensity shall not exceed 0.2 foot candles at the lot line.
So we have the intensity and the deflection in terms of covering the top of the sign. Is that where you're coming from, Susanna? Whether or not that would help deflect any lighting for the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else other than the intensity and the deflection that would be an issue with anybody else? Are we in agreement that we are not concerned about the location as long as it's agreeable to the Board of Selectmen? We are not concerned about the size of the sign. It seems reasonable to us. These are just things I want Mr. Campbell to be able to take off his plate. Is that, anyone have an objection to saying that? Anyone have an objection to saying that we tend to agree with the fact that it needs to be larger than the average bear? And that it will be higher than the average bear? And that it will be the size will be larger than the average bear? Anyone have any problem with any of that?
Well, I, I just have one comment, and that is the fact that the selectmen's wishes were that we keep this sign as close to the present current bylaws. And we're definitely moving away from that.
Well, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Instead of just saying that yes, we're going, allow it to be larger, why don't we find out what size that this person who's building it has it set to? And then we can say, and if we think that's an okay size, then we can say we're giving you a variance up to this size and no larger, so that if in the future it has to be replaced, they know they are limited to that size.
That sounds good. And I also like that I was well with the hours to keep it as close as we can to the the actual bylaws we have right now. And if we do have to change them, so we know the amount and the timeframe. And this sounds kind of silly, but did you say that it was impossible to use a solar? Because I know that's a technology that would be nice if we could.
He couldn't, what he told me was he wasn't aware of a solar panel that would provide enough power without being too big itself.
Okay.
Did he say how big it'd have to be?
It was larger than the, larger than the electric sign.
Okay.
Hey, don't quote me, four by six feet.
So again, in the future, that might be something that might be adaptable.
He says, just not quite there yet.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the intensity, we have the possible deflection of any lighting, and we have the hours of operation. Is there anything else?
Standard operating procedures for who controls the content?
Okay, standard for control of the sign. So I have four things on my list. How many do you have, Mr. Campbell?
It's six, but I think two are duplicates, duplicates. So Angloco, that would be under deflection of lights.
Yes.
Right, and a foot candle at the lot line, that's intensity.
Yes.
Okay, I've got four too. And then hours of operation and SOP for content control.
Thank you.
Right, in other words, and I, I would strongly suggest that you make a return visit to the selectmen. And ask them if they have outright, if they have a problem with the LED. And go to the planning board on an eve, they meet by Zoom too. When there's four members, so maybe we could get more clarity there on how they feel about it.
And when you find out information, can we also get it ahead of time of the meeting, if that would be possible? You'll have more of a definitive answer what you need and what you want. Is it possible we get copies of it like a week before the meeting, just so we have time to check on it? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell, if this seems a little painful, but we are making a rather dramatic change from the bylaw. And we'd just like to make quite sure that the other departments are on board with it. And exactly what we're authorizing in far, as far as the looms and the deflection of the lighting and so forth.
No, I, I appreciate the time and your thoughtful questions, and I'm happy to keep working this with folks, you know, and at some point if someone just says no, then I'm going to have to learn a little bit with that. But I think, you know, we can answer the questions and make an informed decision. It's best for us.
I doubt very much from the comments around the board, again, I'm just one member, that the sign is going to be a no-go. I think it's a case of any modifications that may need to be made to what's happening, whether or not it's LED, whether or not the looms are such that it's not going to blind anyone. And the control over using, you know, I would be very leery if there were multiple, you know, the highway department and the fire department and the EMS and the police and the selectmen and every other department in town had an opportunity. It has to be centralized. My feeling is it would need to be centralized through the select board or the town manager or I, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but I think the fewer people who are capable of programming the sign, the better off we'd be. But then we run into the issue of access. If something happens in the middle of the night, I'm not sure too many of the selectmen would like a phone call. Okay, so we have the four things. We you will get a sign. Okay, we're just trying to define and particularly take a look at those things that deviate from the current bylaw. So do you think you can get this information for us prior to our next meeting, perhaps a week before our next meeting?
No.
And? Okay.
This is a crazy busy time for us.
Okay, so would you like to go into October?
You wouldn't mind.
Would anybody on the board mind? Okay, so we'll go for our October meeting, which is when Leanne?
I'm looking it up right now, October twelfth.
October twelve.
And did you want me to go to the select board prior to that meeting?
I think once you know what the looms are and so forth, I would just like you to go to the, I mean, the board members can disagree with me, but I'd like you to go back to the selectman, explain to them. And go back to the planning board and explain to them, hopefully on an evening when there's four members of the planning board there. Because it is their bylaw that we are altering in this instance. Anyone have anything else or anyone object to us having a motion to continue the hearing until October twelfth at seven PM? If not, I'll entertain a motion provided that you can come down and visit Leanne on a Monday or a Tuesday more, on Monday or a Wednesday morning and sign an extension form. I'm sorry?
I can send that out by email tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, and then he could just drop it off at the town hall in your box anytime, right?
I think Chris wants to say something.
Yes, Chris.
I just wanted to let you know that, or let John know actually, that I can ask on his behalf, if he wants me to, as far as the lighting and the LED to be put on the agenda. We have a meeting in two weeks. If you're, if you're able, otherwise I can just ask them, the board. I don't think that they're going to have a problem because the ZBA is being very conservative about the lighting.
Will you have time to get the looms and the answers to the four questions? Or would you like to extend it beyond the two weeks and perhaps make it a month?
I, I, I'm just worried we're hiring a ton of people right now. It's been quite the, the busy hiring season for the department. And with the other elementary principal gone, I'm doing both schools interviews.
Oh, boy.
Meeting people. Chris, is there a meeting after that?
What's that?
Is, could we do the meeting after the one you just mentioned?
Yeah.
I'm sure I've got the information.
It would be September twelfth would be the next meeting.
Perfect.
After the day.
Could I just make a suggestion? Why don't you just work with Chris? You can email Chris.
I will do that.
And you, you can come up with a date as long as it's in advance enough for us to hear back from the select board. And then you can go to the planning board and I'm, I think I'll contact him later and say I want it on a night when there's four of you.
The, the only other thing I was going to say, Lynn, is this is just my personal preference, and I think I, I mentioned this at the select work meeting is the many messages sometimes are too much. You know, as you're going down the street and you're trying to read them and there's three or four of them, you know, it would just assume there'd be like one or two.
No, just drive slower.
I, I have to, either that or I go into the South Common.
Well, is it, is this going to be like a rolling tape? Is that it?
Not more static. Scrolling across the screen, because they do get a distraction.
I think, in other words, it's going to flash a message on and leave it there for a period of time. And then perhaps flash a different message.
Correct.
I, I, I think that that's important also.
Yeah.
That, that we know that, that it's not going to be scrolling, okay? I'll make a note, not scrolling. Okay. Given what has transpired, I'll entertain a motion for the Berlin Memorial School sign that we continue the hearing until October twelfth at seven PM. And that the petitioner answers the four questions we have given them and meets with the planning board and the selectmen during the interim. But in time to give us at least a week ahead of the meeting, the answers that they have from those entities. Would someone care to make that convoluted motion?
Your, your next meeting is on the fourteenth, I believe, not the twelfth.
October, October twelfth.
We're going to October.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because John, if I may call himself, wanted not to do September. He didn't think he'd be able to do the investigatory that's necessary before that. Okay, did someone make the motion?
Nope. I'll make it.
Thank you, Susanna. Is there a second, please?
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Denny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
And Keith?
Hi.
And I'm a ni, so it's unanimous. I thank you for your patience, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Well, you are refreshing, given our past experience.
That was one for the ages.
When you have your hand out, you probably shouldn't raise your middle finger as you're attempting to have a handshake, you know? Okay, we've continued the hearing until oh, I didn't do the roll call yet, did I?
Yes, you did.
So we're all set. And you're welcome to stay. We have a couple of other things, minutes and stuff to do.
Thank you all for your time. I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have approval of minutes for July. Does someone want to make a motion?
I moved that we accept the meeting minutes from July
As, as presented.
July thirteenth.
Thirteenth, as presented.
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call. Denny?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Okay, we have minutes. You don't have anything on the warrant side, do you, Denny?
Nothing.
Okay. Communications, I'd just like to let folks know a couple of things here that have come up. I think I printed this. Oh, okay. Just to let you know, the ZBA was contacted by, and I believe he's on the Conservation Commission. And he's working for, I don't know, it's a relative of his, but it's Kyle Tucker. Is he on the Conservation?
Yes, he is on the Conservation.
And he had several questions about work they wanted to at the former Flat Penny. And he wanted to, well, I'm looking, see if I need to, an appointment with the board regarding the new cooler build or number one. He's going to put some kind of a concrete slab down in a cooler that's in addition to what's there now. I'll just read you, it's not long, what I wrote back to him. "The final word on these matters would come from the Building Commissioner. The Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals could not give you an answer without you filing a petition on which we would hold a hearing. The Building Commissioner may or may not decide that you need the board's permission to move forward." I've copied Richard Hanks on my response. Please contact him for guidance. We can't get into can you do this, or are you pre-existing non-conforming, or is the left wall too close to the right wall? So I just wanted to let you know that it seems that they're active. And they're going forward. Tomorrow, I'm going to write a note because we don't have a filing yet from the cannabis folks. They have until the seventeenth in order to get on the agenda for September. I'm going to tell them that regardless of whether or not they file, they still need to appear in September if they need another continuance. But as of right now, we don't have any I do know that they have met with the, and I think I think yeah, I think that, that they've met with Conservation. Because I was in attendance at maybe not the most recent, but one of the Conservation. And we do have a letter from Conservation. Basically saying that, you know, it's okay with them. I think there's also a letter from the Board of Health. So one of the things I asked Conservation to do when they said, yeah, we'll look at the plan and see if it's okay, was to tell them to give us the date of the plan. And that it would be the one that they present to us, if that makes, you know, in other words, it's not two different plans. We need to know what plan it is. I know initially the Conservation Commission had concerns about where the septic system was going to go because it was on the other side of a marsh area or running water or something. And they told them they didn't want them to put it, the septic system over there. And I guess they went to DEP and DEP overruled it. So the local board had nothing that they So the local board had nothing that they could do except go along with them. Um, so we'll keep informed on that. Um, there are, and this is what Leanne has told me. Um, up in Old Central Street, there's, there's a potential for us getting involved with the used car place. Um, Exxon still hasn't filed, but they're still out there for the gas station on the other side of, uh, 495 on Route 62. And, um, 261 Pleasant, what was that, special permit or something?
Special permit. Special permit, it's like, and approval for a used.
For what?
A used car dealership.
Uh, that's on Old Central Street. I'm talking about 261 Pleasant.
Yeah, that's also for a used car dealership.
Oh, great.
Can I ask where on Pleasant? I can't.
I believe it's the corner right where, near the post office, right where if you go to the right, it's Pleasant, and if you keep going this way itself, there's a big house right on the corner. I believe that, 261.
That's the one with the garages in the back, I think?
Yes, yes, I believe so. I think.
Corner of Whitney and?
No. It's the corner of Pleasant and South.
Right. Pleasant Street takes a right there, even though the lines don't go right. It's confusing.
It's, it's the old, uh, septic pumping guy house.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he used to always have the outhouse on his front lawn at Christmas with Santa coming out.
Yeah.
Oh.
And there was a used car lot across the street.
Hogan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Hogan had one.
So the one on Old Central, then, um, is not for, I guess it's not a, a dealership. He just wants to store cars and trucks there. So it's a storage.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it is for a dealership and not just for storage. Cause originally, he, he asked to store vehicles, and he was told he couldn't do that, that the bylaws allow for a dealership, up to 10 cars, but not for storage.
Yeah, with a special permit.
Right, so bo- both of those are for a car, small car dealership.
Are they both? I'm just wondering what the, um, zoning is. Are they a commercial village?
Um, let me see if his letter says. 61 Pleasant is zoned between commercial village and residential agricultural. And the.
So it's both? And, and in other words, it's back so far, and then it becomes residential?
Yep. And, um, the lot on Old Central Street is commercial. Commercial.
It's, yeah, it's commercial. It's not commercial village.
Yeah, it's commercial.
61 Pleasant Street just looks like a house here.
I think it's 261.
261, and, and it is a big house, but with, you know, a long driveway down, and then there's, um.
Garages?
Garages is down there.
Okay, all right, I see it.
So those, those have all come through the office in which the, the building inspector wrote a letter, and it's my understanding that they all intend to file a petition.
But none of them have as yet, but they haven't.
Have as yet.
They have until next Wednesday if they're gonna be on the docket for September.
Correct.
Susanna, I think that this is something that we should alert the planning board to, that there seems to be a resurgence in the used car dealership arena. Um, because I'm not sure that some of these folks, you know, that, that, that would be something that they would want to be doing at this point, but maybe they do.
Are you asking? The next meeting?
I'm thinking that, yeah, the two of us should probably go, but I don't know when it is.
Planning board meet next Tuesday, the 16th. And I'm not sure if they're meeting again in August, or if they'll wait until September. But I do know they're meeting next week, the 16th. Via Zoom.
Okay.
What day of the week is the 16th?
It's a Tuesday. They meet on, they typically meet the second and fourth Tuesday, but they had a joint meeting with the select board this week, so they didn't meet last night. They put it off to the 16th. So then I don't think they'll meet on the 23rd if they're meeting on the 16th. So the only one I'm certain of is I know they're meeting tomorrow on the 16th. And then I think their next one might not be until September.
Okay, maybe we can, um, plan on attending that.
By tomorrow on the 16th, you meant Tuesday on the 16th?
Tuesday, the 16th, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any other communications that they want to share? And I don't know where else this would fall, but, um, Jimmy and Pat, you're all set, right, with your, um, work off stuff?
Yep.
I had a couple of suggestions, if I may be so bold. I'll send you a list. What I would do if I were you folks is I would take the spreadsheet that you have from before, that, that, from the town clerk, and add columns to that. I wouldn't start out by going all the way back to 1960 and typing it in. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Um, and I think that there are several columns that, you know, need to be added, but I think you could just add them in. And then I think you should go back to maybe the year 2000 and come forward from there. Um, one of the things that we want to use this for is for the expiring permits. So we'll know which permits are expiring. And let's, if you go back to 2000, we'll see how far back these have expiration dates. Um, this, this is just so that we can find them. One of the, the columns that I'm looking at is book and page, the nature of the permit or variance. They just say a special permit in the current, um, spreadsheet. I think we need to say special permit in law, special permit uh, contract, uh, home-based contractor. Um, that type of thing. The town clerk's number, which is on there. Uh, the status, which I think is on there. Um, the, the date that it was approved, and that would be the date that's on the, when the town clerk signs off on the 20 days. Um, maybe an applicant and a property owner, because they may or may not be the same person. Um, obviously an expiration date. But, um, let me type up my thoughts, and you can use them if you will or not. Does that seem like a plan for you guys?
Yes.
To take the existing spreadsheet, and then you don't have to go back to 1960. If we get back to 20, uh, the year 2000, and we find that that's when we started doing the expiring, then maybe we can go back beyond that afterwards. But right now, what we need it for most is for those expiring. Um, also, would you just check and see what um, version of Excel you'd be using? Because the older the version, probably the better off you are. And I say that because if Leanne wants to use it, I don't know what's on her equipment um, or, um, uh, a version of Excel. I know that we've run into this with other folks, whether it's Word or Excel, sending them files, and they have an older version of Word, and they can't read it. So, um, hopefully, you aren't, you know, on the most current, um, ye- current version of Excel. But, um, at, at the very least, make sure that the version that the most important person in this is Leanne to be able to read it. Make sure that you aren't um, beyond where she is.
Yeah, I'll try to determine what version I have at work.
Okay.
It, it, I just give me some ti- I am away on vacation next week, and, um, I hope to remember to do that when I get back, but, um, after next week, if you haven't heard from me, you can pester me about it.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would probably be well to know what you have at home.
Right.
Um, you know, in, in most people, I believe, I don't know, you're more of a techie Keith than I am. But, um, if you, can't you choose the version of, of Excel you want to put your spreadsheet in?
I mean, you can, but most of the, most everything's compatible these days, um, you know, forward compatible anyways.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It would be better to put it in an older version than to put it in the latest one, and then find out that it is not backward compatible. Do you see what I mean, Keith?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think things like Excel and, um, Google Sheets and, and stuff like that are, are very tolerant of that. It's not like the old days. I, I wouldn't worry about it too much, cause even if you need to save it, most of the software is free these days anyways, so it's not like it used to be where if, if it was saved in a newer version and someone couldn't open it, they can't, you know, they, they had to buy the software to do it. Now, it's just like a download if they don't have it, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, to read document, maybe not to edit it or work on it, but even that, I think, I think their pricing model now is just all di- I know Google Sheets is free. Um, but even Excel, I believe, is, um.
Oh, I don't know. They wanted quite a bit of money for the package, for the office package in the latest, um, version.
Yeah, but if you're doing, I mean, you're just putting data in the cells. You're not doing, you're not doing pivot tables. You're not doing anything fancy like that. So as long as you just keep it a straightforward, basic spreadsheet, it should work across all platforms.
Right.
Okay. We'll be adding columns, and we'll want to be able to do searches in the columns and stuff, so.
Yeah, then, you know, if you're worried about it, just use a Google. Google Sheets is the same as Excel. It's all the same functions, and it's free.
Well, we may just entertain your expertise to help Jimmy or Pat.
I, I'm happy to help.
Get started. Okay. Um, yeah, and in September too, folks, um, they're supposed to be giving us notification of the CPTC, any training classes they have. I'm really angry that I missed the one on exceptions. Um, and I know none of you were able to go. I want to see, if you think of it, Susanna, ask me when we go to the planning board next Tuesday, if they, um, if any of them attended the one on exceptions, because they usually, and if they got the, like, spreadsheet or whatever, or the PowerPoint, uh, maybe we can take that from them. They do have some out there, but they don't have the one on exceptions out there on their website. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Is it worth asking?
I'm sorry?
Is it worth, worth asking whoever gave that presentation?
The name's there, but yeah, maybe I can find, because it was a lawyer that did it. Um, and it did, it didn't give an email or anything, but it did um, give his company. So maybe looking up the company, we can figure out an email for him and ask him, huh? Sounds good. Okay, anybody else have anything? Well, you enjoy your vacation next week, dear Leanne.
I hope so. Weather looks much better than it has been, so, not as hot and humid.
Um, should I ask? Next Wednesday is the deadline for filing, correct?
Correct.
Um, how about if I ask the town clerk to let me know at nine o'clock, send me an email, and let me know if there's any new petitions?
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, and then you could, she could leave it. You could either pick it up, or it could wait till Monday, but at least you would know that day whether or not any came in.
Yes. Okay.
Add it to your list.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if no one has anything else.
I'll make it.
How about somebody's? Thank you, Pat. Um, I'll go around for, uh, Denny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Virginia?
Hi.
And Keith?
He said aye, but he's on mute.
Aye.